Good evening. Welcome to this special program designed to actually help you prepare to cast your vote for President of the Board of Aldermen for the City of St. Louis. Now, this is a critical position for the legislative body of a major city facing critical issues. Four individuals want that job, and they are here tonight. They are State Senator Jamila Nasheed, Board President Louis Reed, Alderwoman Megan Aleah Green, and Jimmy Edwards.
Matthews.
I'm sorry, Jimmy Matthews.
I get that often.
Rules for tonight's forum are as follows. This is in fact a forum. As such, debate among the candidates is not allowed. Each candidate will have an equal opportunity to express his or her position on issues. In our first segment, each will be asked to give us an opening statement. Each candidate has one minute to say who they are and why they are running. In our second segment, they will respond to questions they received by email. Each candidate has two minutes to answer those three questions. In our third segment, we have pre-selected questions from studio guests. Each candidate has a minute thirty to answer those questions. And in our closing segment, the fourth segment, each candidate has one minute to wrap up. To begin, we'd like to ask our candidates to give us a little bit about themselves with an opening statement, and we will start with Louis Reed.
Well, thanks. First, let me just thank each and every one of you for showing up and coming out tonight, and also the iHeartRadio for hosting this forum. I've had an opportunity to serve as President opportunity to serve as President and Board of Aldermen. Across that time, we've gotten just some phenomenal things done. We created the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and through that fund, we've been able to help tens of thousands of families all across the City of St. Louis in various different capacities. We created the Youth Crime Prevention Fund, and in this Youth Crime Prevention Fund, we've been able to help and set over twenty thousand kids back on the right path, and I think that that is, I think that that's just been tremendous. We passed, for the first time in the history of the City of St. Louis, a Minority and Women-Owned Business Inclusion Plan into law, so that now we have that in the law. I also had an opportunity to work with our school system to bring our school system back to full accreditation.
Thank you. Now, we'd like to hear from Senator Nasheed.
I thank you all very much. I am Jamila Nasheed, and I am running for President of the Board of Aldermen simply because this city is not working for everyone. When you look south of Delmar, you see growth and development, economic growth in a major way. And when you go north of Delmar, all you see is vacant and abandoned buildings, block after block after block. We have a twenty percent unemployment rate of young black males. We have massive development happening in this city with little to no minority participation. Right now, we need a bold leader, a leader that can get things done. Crime is running rapid throughout our city. I don't think we have to go outside of this city to figure out how we reduce crime. We need to take the triangle approach that Chief Hayden and Jimmy Edwards is pushing, so that we can begin to deal with the crime inside the City of St. Louis. They are working with the FBI, the DEA, the ATF, and they're also working with police service officers. We can make a change. We need strong leadership now more than ever before.
Let's hear from Alderwoman Megan Green.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out today. My name is Megan Aleah Green, and I am running for President of the Board of Aldermen because the status quo in our city is not working. We are known nationally right now for our problems, whether it is issues within our police department, number of officer-involved shootings, our crime rates, our infant mortality rates, the list goes on and on and on. I want us to be known nationally for our solutions. And in order to do that, we need a very different type of leadership than we've had in this city for a long time. Somebody who's willing to embrace what's working in other cities. Bring in programs like Operation Peacemaker from Richmond, California, which used to be like us, which used to make the national news for their crime rates, but they added social workers to their police department. They created a group violence intervention program, and they decreased their crime rates by sixty percent over five years. We can too. We need to start looking at putting together a fair development plan that incentivizes development on the north side and scales back incentives in the central corridor, so that we actually have money to fund city services and fund our schools.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes. My name is Jimmy Matthews. I'm running because we need integrity in the office of President of Board of Aldermen. I am a pastor, preacher, politician, and businessman. I was raised in business. My daddy was a doctor, but several businesses in the City of St. Louis. I've developed some property in Wellston in the years. Started our church at Riverview Boulevard Baptist Church forty years ago. We started an organization called People Involved for a Better Community. I know how to build our city block by block. I know how to get money from other ways, other places. And I believe that when I start connecting with Africa, Dubai, and et cetera, we're going to be able to get some oil money in our neighborhood, and we will start some service stations in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We'd like to move on to our prepared questions. These were questions that the candidates each received via email. The first question is, what are your thoughts on ward reduction? November sixth, two thousand twelve, the citizens of St. Louis voted to restructure the Board of Aldermen from twenty-eight to fourteen wards. Proposition R was approved by sixty-one point four percent of the voters. Is reduction a good move for the City of St. Louis? Just how does the city benefit? Or does it reduce the voice of citizens? What's the benefit of ward reduction? We're going to rotate and alternate the beginning, the starting speaker. On this round, we will start with Senator Nasheed.
I don't believe that it would reduce black representation. However, I do believe that the community need to be engaged, and they should have been engaged immediately after we passed Prop R. There should have been an ongoing conversation among the community as to what this here reduction will look like in the City of St. Louis. I think that there should have been a program that was purchased to be able to draw a map after the census have been taken, to see what it will look like, and that hasn't happened. However, when I become President of the Board of Aldermen, what I would began to do is start the process that should have been started a long time ago, and that's engage in the community and making sure that it's equitable across the City of St. Louis when it comes to fourteen, the fourteen Aldermen and the ward reduction.
Let's ask Alderwoman Green.
I think that we need to be looking forward rather than backwards. Voters overwhelmingly approved board reduction, and I think that it would be very unlikely, if going back to the voters, that they, that sixty percent would vote to repeal it. So I think that we need to be looking forward. So what does that look like? Clean Missouri was passed overwhelmingly in this state, and by over eighty percent in the state, in the City of St. Louis this past November. And as part of that, it created this independent redistricting commission that was in charge of drawing lines, that had to draw these lines based upon some criteria, had to preserve minority participation, they had to be contiguous districts. I think that's what we need to do. We need to be bringing in an independent demographer, work with an organization like the Brennan Center for Justice that specializes in equitable municipal redistricting, to hear from folks all across our city what it is that they want to see out of the next round of redistricting, and then take it out of the hands of the Board of Aldermen. I think that when legislators are in charge of drawing our own lines, we draw them for political reasons, not for the reasons that are necessarily for the best interests of people in our communities. So I think it's very important that we bring in that independent demographer, that independent commission, to ensure that at the end of the day, when ward reduction happens, that it does work in the best interests of residents in the City of St. Louis.
Mr. Matthews, what are your thoughts on ward reduction?
Well, when I become President of Board of Aldermen, we're going to get rid of such ideas. Most of these ideas come from rich folks, such as Santella, and he wants to control the city and everything else. So we can't allow somebody to plan for our future, and we need to plan our own future, and that's going to require somebody with the wisdom of Solomon to deal with this. And we lack wisdom and leadership, and we need to start applying that to our decision-making. Things that, planning for another neighborhood or another place somewhere else is not a plan for us. I'm sort of an original person. I like to create. I like to design my own things. So if we tailor-made our city to what we want our city to be and not put on somebody else's suit that for us, we are very unique. We're the gateway to the west. We are a city without a county, so to speak, and we need to make sure that we have the intelligence and depth of understanding to be able to create some things that's very unique, and I think we can do that with me being your President of Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
Mr. Reed, your thoughts on ward reduction?
Well, I've actually led the board through a redistricting process. This last redistricting, if you just took a look at just the numbers, like a demographer would, if they just came and took a look at the numbers, we would have had to move two African-American wards. So that's what it looked like. We were able to navigate around that and get everybody in agreement with the map, so that we had one hundred percent on the Aldermen, for the first time in the history of the City of St. Louis, all co-sponsored a map. It's that kind of leadership that it's going to take this next time around in terms of working with each Alderman, understanding the nuances across all of these neighborhoods, which would be lost with an independent demographer. So I think that we should definitely draw the map ourselves. We have the capability to do it, and that gives us an opportunity to work with each and every neighborhood all across the city. Now, what does it bring? It is not going to bring some of the efficiencies that people hoped that it would bring. Currently, we introduce somewhere in neighborhood of three hundred board bills a session, and of those three hundred board bills a session, we only have four or five that are left over at the end of the day. So you're not going to get, you're not going to have more board bills moving through. The efficiencies that it gains is that now, since you have a ward that's twice the size, the Alderperson or the elected official no longer will have to listen to the community as much as they have to listen to the community today.
Our second question. This question, again, was submitted to each candidate about a week ago. They've had time to think about it. Number two, the Federal Aviation Administration has accepted St. Louis's preliminary application to participate in an airport privatization pilot program. A working group of consultants, community leaders, and members of the board's Transportation and Commerce Committee are studying this opportunity. Do you think privatization of this city asset is good in terms of economic investment for residents, or is it a bad move? Let's start with Alderwoman Green.
Thank you. So privatization as a concept rarely ever works out in the public interest. What privatization does is it takes an asset that is supposed to work for a public good, and it transfers it over to operating for a private good, to operate for the purpose of creating profits for shareholders, rather than having the purpose be working for the best interests of people. I think we have to center that and recognize that as we're looking at any kind of privatization efforts. The President of the Board of Aldermen will likely be the swing vote on the Board of Estimate and Apportionment about whether this gets privatized, and I have vowed to vote no. This process has been flawed from day one. The conflicts of interest have been fraught. We have lobbyists that are representing both the city and Rex Singfield, which is a very huge conflict of interest. The folks involved in it only get paid if they actually recommend privatization. That is another conflict of interest. If we actually wanted to study how to optimize the airport, we would have done a study that looked at how we do it as a public asset versus how we do it as a private asset. We would have looked at how to maybe make regional buy-in, so that St. Louis County and St. Louis City have a stake in the airport. Instead, we're going down one track that has a predetermined result, that is using research methods that I would not be able to use to graduate from college. This is a flawed process, looking for a problem that doesn't exist, and I think that we need leadership that is actually going to be able to stand up to a lot of the moneyed interests that are pushing this and protect our public assets.
Mr. Matthews, your thoughts on privatization of Lambert?
I used to work at Lambert when they built the first garage in front of the main terminal in the engineering department. The airport is a golden goose for our city, and if you're going to sell your gold for peanuts, the mayor retired so that he could be a part of this game plan of being with this group. Shamu, Kim Tucci, and Mayor Slay, they was working with the people that's going to do the project, and that's a deal for those persons to make themselves rich. Remember Flint, Michigan, when they took over the water division? People died. People got sick. I would imagine that the runways out there at Lambert's would not be maintained and kept so that no rocks come up out of the rank, come up out of the, out of the runway. If anyone rock come up and get into the engine of the plane, you may have a tremendous tragedy. Those persons that's for profit are going to make sure they make money at your expense, our expense, and possibly our debt.
Mr. Reed, your thoughts on privatization?
Well, airport privatization, number one, it would be a lease, a long-term lease with a private company. And most people, probably even a lot of people that are listening today, probably think that it means that you're going to sell or divest your, the citizens of the airport, and that's not what it is at all. Congress created airport privatization because airport funds are restricted funds, which means that we get an average of six million dollars a year. That's what we get back in our general revenue. Meanwhile, we have six hundred million dollars in debt, so if we wanted to pay off our debt with just our revenue, it would take us the next hundred years. That's our situation. We look north of Delmar, and if we want to really truly be able to address some of the issues north of Delmar, we're going to need a source of revenue, which is why I think that it is prudent that we at least see what a proposal looks like. To say today that, that absolutely not, no matter what the proposal looks like, we're not going to, we're not going to take it before the voters, give people an opportunity to look at it, and give people an opportunity to weigh in, I think that that is highly irresponsible. It is something that is very unpopular, right? But even though it's very unpopular, if you have to attend as many funerals as I attend and talk to as many broken families that I have to work with across this city, you would be willing to say, okay, let's see what airport privatization is. Nobody knows today. That's what we hope to find out through the study.
Senator Nasheed, your thoughts on that?
I too agree with Alderwoman Green. I believe that the process was flawed in the beginning. When you have a billionaire who's a Republican, who is one that is a free marketer, who's one that looks to reduce government as a Republican, and who's one that was willing, ready, and able to put up the monies for the application, and then the mayor, the former mayor initiated, Rex put up the application monies, and then after that, the same affiliates who are associated with Rex, be they're over the RFQ and the RFP. I don't know where this have worked in this country. We have had approximately seven tries at this, privatizing the airport, and everyone has reverted back to either trying it or not wanting to do it at all. So this is just, I believe, a scam. I think it's a scam for individuals to make monies off the backs of Rex Singfield. You have eighteen consultants who's making over eight hundred thousand dollars a month. Okay, and those are individuals that was in the, I mean, the former, the former administration, Mayor Slay, he's on payroll, Jeff Rainford's on payroll. You have all of these individuals that's making monies off the backs of this scam. I believe if you have a good product, then you go and you sell that product to the people, and you let the people decide. And if your product is not good, then you want to continue to hide behind it. If you have what it takes to change the narrative of this city when it comes to bringing more monies into this city, then go sell it to the people and let the people decide. And that's something that they're not willing to do, and that's why I am adamantly opposed, opposed to it.
Onto our third question. Would a city-county merger be good for the region? Why or why not? Should voters statewide be allowed any voice, any voice at all, in the proposal that affects a narrow region of the state? Shouldn't this just be between the city and county? Let's start with Mr. Matthews.
I've noticed some things about the county. That is that none of the city people get into the business of the county. Those people have the kind of wit to make sure that they make all the decisions for their place in the county. I was thinking about the lottery that we supposedly got some money for the schools. Where is that money? All these little tricks that we keep going for. City merger means that you're not going to have any political power. It's going to be diluted with the county and the Republicans. They're going to control it. And that's has been going on when they decided they would eliminate the clerk's office, the assessor's office, and a number of other citywide offices. When you reduce the participation in the political elective thing, one thing, I was talking to some of the committee people. They didn't know nothing about what was going on. Alderperson didn't convey what was happening regarding the merger or reducing the size of the Board of Aldermen. All this thing, lacks of communication and coordination in terms of getting all minds on the issue, trying to decide what would be best for all of us. I have not seen any planning from the Central Committee, and they just do things hyperbole and then try to get us to buy into something that doesn't even make sense, and you had to be a real fool to go for anything they're presenting.
Mr. Reed, your thoughts on the city-county merger?
I think that is very problematic. If we look at If we look at the fact that it could fail here in the city and the county, and if it passes our state, we would still have to do it, and I think that is a major mistake. I think that if the backers really wanna push it and really wanna get it done, it's up to them to convince the people that are, that will be mostly impacted by it. I think that the structure of the Board of Freeholders and the powers that they have, I think we need to review that and understand that truly, because they have pretty broad powers in terms of establishing that structure. And also, the one thing that people continue to miss is the way the debt and the revenue structure is set up. We would still house and own our own debt. Our revenue, our sales tax revenue would go elsewhere, and then we would hope to get some of that sales tax revenue back to be able to pay our bills. I think that's problematic. I think that that ends, that would automatically place us and the other municipalities out in the county on a watch list with the rating agencies, and it would affect our bond rating. What does that mean? That means that we all ultimately end up picking up more of the cost in the short term, right? So, you know, there's a lot that needs to be reviewed in that plan, but that's just a couple of things.
Thank you. Senator Nashid?
Well, I believe that there should be some type of consolidation or either collaboration, and we can collaborate on a lot of things right now when it comes to the city and county. However, I don't believe, under no circumstances, that the outstate elected officials and those who they represent should dictate to us if or when we should consolidate. I believe that it should be a vote of the people by the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County. However, I also believe that, at the end of the day, we have to protect black representation. We have more African-Americans now than ever before. In the city of St. Louis, you only have two non-African-Americans that are holding office, and that's the mayor and recorder of deeds. Yeah, the recorder of deeds. And I believe that now that we have more representation, they wanna change the game. And not only that, we have Rex Singfield hands in this pot as well. Rex wanna do away with the earnings tax, and that is why they are pushing to do a city-and-county merger. Now, Louisville, if you go look, they did the merger, but they have shown no cost savings whatsoever. So what we have to begin to do is ask the question, how would this impact minorities? How would this save, have a savings to the city? And how would it reduce crime? And we haven't heard any of those things. Not only that, if we wanna really change the narrative in the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County, why aren't we talking about education? Education is not even mentioned in this city-county merger, and that is appalling. I am not for it, and I think the city and the county should dictate their own destiny. That's why I pushed legislation last week.
Thank you, Senator Nashid. Alderwoman Green?
I support a merger. I don't support this merger. And the reason I don't support this merger is because it isn't about merger. This is about privatization. What is being pushed by Better Together is very similar to what happened to Flint, Michigan before Flint, Michigan became Flint, Michigan. What they, what happened in Michigan was the governor declared a financial state of emergency over the city of Flint, removed authority to make budgetary decisions from their local elected officials, and instead put an appointed board over that city. That appointed board then gave contracts to their water department to their political friends, and in doing so, they cut corners to create more profit, and we ended up poisoning an entire city. That is what this does. This takes away local elected authority from the city of St. Louis, puts a five-person debt service board over the city, eliminates the city charter, and puts us under the county charter, which would allow for privatization of our public assets. It is no wonder that the same folks that are pushing the Better Together proposal are the ones who are also pushing airport privatization. It's all connected. I do think that there is some benefit to consolidating services between city and county, to consolidating police practices between city and county. I think these are local decisions that should be decided between people in the city and people in the county. I also understand that there are few changes, if we were to consolidate police departments, that do need to be done through a statewide constitutional amendment because of the way that our police departments are structured within the Missouri Constitution. So if there are statewide constitutional changes that have to be made to allow for a merger to happen, then let's just address those specific issues through constitutional amendments, rather than putting this entire proposal up to a state vote to push privatization.
Thank you, Alderwoman Green. We have our next segment.
This is iHeart Media, St. Louis edition of iHeart Communities, sponsored by the St. Louis City Chapter of the NAACP and STLTV, the City of St. Louis TV channel.
Our next segment focuses on questions from guests. Three questions will be asked. Each candidate will be asked to answer the question, and I'm going to ask for a little assistance in getting the microphone to the individual with the question. The first answer will be provided by Lewis Reed.
If the Better Together proposal does fail, do you still believe that fighting the alleged negative effects of the fragmentation of the region should be addressed by the city government? And if so, what smaller steps would you like to see happen?
Absolutely. Thanks for the question. Absolutely, we need to do some things to address the issues of fragmentation. Think about the fact that we have 55 police departments within just our area. 18, when you move just through our area, there's, what, 18 different life expectancies? So we have to address those issues. We can begin to do some of those things today. We can enter into cooperative agreements with St. Louis County and the region and share in our police services, create a unified academy. We can work to add some, is it over? We can also work to, you know, combine services on our health department, our parks department, our rec centers. We can begin to do some of those things today that would result in more efficient government through the Better Together thing. We don't have to come together to work together and to have an agreement together. Those things can happen today.
Senator Nashid, your response to the gentleman's question?
I too believe that there are a lot of different departments that we can collaborate, like the Public Health Department. We can also collaborate when it comes to police and having a unified police department across the city of St. Louis and the county. However, I think that more now than ever before, we need to figure out how do we collaborate the city of St. Louis north and south? Because right now, we have a massive divide, and it's very polarizing. And what we have to do is take care and clean up our own home, and our home is a hot mess right now. And so what we need to do is figure out how we change the structure and how we do business in the city of St. Louis when it comes to the great divide, the Delmar divide. And I think that's gonna take a new vision with new leadership.
Alderwoman Green?
I too agree that we can begin to be more collaborative already. I think that there is opportunity to consolidate some of the county offices. I think that there's opportunity to start to get police departments on the same page in terms of planning or in terms of training standards. And I think that we work toward bringing the Board of Freeholders process forward. The challenge that we have with that right now is it is the mayor and the county executive who would appoint whoever as part of the Board of Freeholders process. And with both of those people in favor of the Better Together proposal, the likelihood that we would end up today with something different than Better Together, I think, is very unlikely. So given that that is not a reality right now, I do think that cooperative agreements are a good step forward. I do think that we should be creating better collaborations between the Board of Aldermen and the county council so that we're standardizing everything from, you know, building codes to nondiscrimination protections across the city and the county. So when the day comes that we do merge, we have a lot of those things already in place.
Mr. Matthews?
I was listening at Jet Planes years ago. God bless the child that has his own. We have our own city. We are politically strong in this city, African-Americans, and people who plan to take away your political influence, they would plan something that's not to our advantage. And you remember the Indians always got a treaty, and they break it and so forth. This is same deal, same game, to rip us off from our political empowerment, our economic empowerment. And I like the uniqueness that we have, being a city that don't have to be in the county. So I want us to think about this. Better Together, you remember New Age Savings and Loan, Merging? Yeah. We know that that was an African-American business, Hudson Emancipate, all these businesses, Martin Luther King with all those businesses. I wanna see that. I wanna see us with a black Wall Street from downtown to western. You remember the pennies out in western, how booming it was and all that type of thing? So what I'm trying to say to us, we had a good deal. We accepted a deal where we're gonna be, what that's, they wanted us to integrate or something that they want us to be involved in, and as a result, we lost our economic power, political power. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Our second question from a guest in the audience.
Great. One thing I will say is that the board resolution creating that transparency portal that deals with the Working Group for Privatization is the best and most extensive thing I ever seen the city do to open up what's going on in the city with respect to this process. And if you go to it, they recently posted the airport did its independent audit on its operations, and in its audit, it said that operating revenues decreased, and the decrease because they had to lower the cost assessments to the airlines, so the airlines are paying less now to use our airport, and they had to lower the rental rates for people who are renting the airport. Then it said that operating expenses increased. So we had, we lowered the revenue, we gave them breaks on rent, and at the same time, our operating expenses increased, they said from a net result, a net operating loss.
And your question is?
Decrease of 472%. 472%, and then we turn around and we refinance some bonds that says between now and 2048 that we need to pay back $900 million, and we have another billion dollars in maintenance, deferred maintenance that we have to do. So what my question is, is based on the financial conditions of the city's airport, what is it that you plan to do to make sure that the taxpayer doesn't have to bail it out? Because based on this audit, the airport is in serious trouble, and nobody's talking about it.
Senator Nashid?
Well, you know what? You know, Pruitt, you know, a lot of people can come up with a lot of numbers, and they can make right look wrong. However, when you have the comptroller, Darlene Green, who we all respect, she is our comptroller. She have seen our bond rating drop twice already in the city of St. Louis, when she is saying, hey, let's stop and look at how we're doing business in the city of St. Louis, which the way we're doing it, the way they wanna do it with the airport, is not working. And again, I am gonna defer to Darlene Green when it comes to privatizing the airport. And right now, Darlene Green is saying, no way, okay? She is a fiscal, responsible, I mean, fiscal conservative, responsible person that I've always looked to when it comes to how this city function in the city of St. Louis.
Thank you. Alderwoman Green?
So I've seen different numbers. I have not seen the document that you have there, but I have seen different numbers that have showed that our airport has been growing. And are there opportunities to enhance it? Yes, there are. And I think that there are opportunities to enhance it as a public asset, because even if we increase profits associated with it, those profits under a private entity contracting it out will not go to the city. Those will go to shareholders who want to get rich off of our airport. We have to look no farther than Chicago's parking meter debacle. Chicago was in a very similar situation. Their city was broke, they had a lot of debt, they were in the 11th hour of deciding what to do to avoid bankruptcy, and so they privatized their parking operations. And it was probably the biggest mistake that Chicago has ever made, because they ended up losing out on a lot of revenue. The people who privatized parking meters will make back their entire investment 40 years before that contract is up, and it has risen fees on consumers of parking operations and taken away public accountability. So we have to protect our airport as a public asset, and if we're studying anything, it should be studying how to maximize it as a public asset.
Mr. Matthews?
I noticed that when we got the person that's over the airport, I think she was a stewardess, but do you remember Colonel Griggs? He was an advocate for aviation, and he did a lot of things to advance the airport. When you have people working in directorship, and they are handpicked, and they don't have the skills, you can run yourself into bankruptcy. And that's what happens when you get a novice on the job. I would envision if the airport is privatized, we gonna have a port where drugs are going to come into the city through the gateway. You remember, Slade brother was considered have done something in regards to getting drugs through airlines and stuff. So privatization will leave you out of the, watching, looking over the shoulders of these people who own the airport or take over the airport. Drugs gonna increase and other things. So what I'm saying to us is that we have to run our own. If you don't govern your own, the other people gonna govern it for their own personal interests, and that's what's happening. Rich billionaires wanna make money. That's what they wanna make.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews? Mr. Reed?
You know, being the president of the Board of Aldermen is a difficult job, and it's a difficult job because a lot of times you will have more information than the general public, as in that audit. I know about the audit, so I understand clearly, more than anybody on this panel by a long shot, the fiscal condition of our airport. I understand some of the many challenges that we have across our city because I deal with them daily. When we look at, you know, the contract to take a look at what we can do, that contract, we put, my office put over 863 changes in that contract. We made sure that it was a transparent contract. We changed it so that there isn't any incentive to close by two of the major contractors that will act as advisors for the city between us and Grow Missouri. And I think that that is very critical. And here's the other thing. Again, I wanna really, it's important for people to understand, there's nothing to make a decision on yet because we have no idea what an airport privatization deal can do. If indeed it can actually bring to the city of St. Louis $2 billion, we can wipe out the $600 million in debt that we have, and then have about 1.4 billion to look north of Delmar and to begin to address some of these systemic issues across our city.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
But that's gonna require us working with the voters.
We're going to move on to our third question.
So my question is, being the president of the Board of Aldermen, and Senator Nashid touched on that, from the south to the north side, what are you guys going to do to ensure that the alderperson in that ward will cut down on crime to make the citizens feel safe in their ward? How can you build that relation better with the police department? Because as soon as something happened downtown or Central West End, they have foot patrol, they have cameras, they have everything. Things go on every day in North St. Louis, and it's like, okay, we want, I want to see that action on the north side and the south side, just like downtown and Central West End.
Alderwoman Green, would you respond first?
Thank you. I think first off, we need to take a broader look at what public safety is beyond just policing. I think that too often in our city, we're stuck in the mindset of police equate public safety when we are spending almost- When we are spending almost 60% of our budget on public safety, have the third highest staff police department per capita in the country. And the vast majority of that public safety money is going into an arrest and incarcerate model. So policing jails, courts. And it's not working. What I am a proponent of is Operation Peacemaker, which was done in Richmond, California. Add social workers to the police department and they created this gun violence fellowship program. So we know if we look at violence as an epidemic, that most violence is created by a small group of people. And if you can get a handle on that small group of people, then you stop it from spreading. So what this program did is it recruited folks who were at risk of committing gun crimes, had maybe been in the hospital with a gunshot wound or had a gun conviction previously, got them access to jobs, housing, services, paid them a monthly stipend in order to participate in the program and cover their basic living expenses. They saw dramatic decreases in crime within the first two years. And over five years, a 62% decrease. It got at the root of the issues rather than always assigning more police to chase after problems once they occur.
Thank you, Alderwoman Green. Mr. Matthews.
Yes. I think, I was looking at the movie Shaft. He had a problem with somebody doing some things in his neighborhood, so Shaft took it on and solved the problem. We need Shaft, we need to police our neighborhood, police our self neighborhood. So if we decide that we want the police to live in our neighborhoods instead of just patrol and contain, we need the policeman staying in the neighborhood. I remember one of my classmates from Sudan, he lived in the neighborhood. And when the police don't want to live where they're trying to protect and serve, then they ought to be somewhere else. We ought to police our own neighborhood. What Central West End does, they pass a little bill where they tax all the businesses and they hire policemen after work to work that. We could do that, get a bill, piece of legislation whereby we would charge the business an extra tax and we would hire police to be in the neighborhood. Those kinds of things that's going to make things work well for us. And trying to get people to do things that we ought to do for ourselves, let us police our own neighborhood. And those people that don't want to live in the neighborhoods, they want to police, we ought to just get them to go somewhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Reed.
Well, first, it's important to understand that not one member of public safety reports to the Board of Aldermen, none of them. Not the police department, not the fire department, not the police chief, nobody reports to the Board of Aldermen. We don't have a solid line reporting or a dotted line reporting. So really, truly, they don't have to listen to anything we say. But we use our bully pulpit to try to, to try to get different things put in place. One of the things that we did, that I introduced last year was a ordinance that now will require an annual public safety plan be put in place and make it also a data-driven plan. But also, it's not just on the public safety side. It's everything from trash trucks to, you know, getting money in our parks and streets and everything, right? So we have to have a sea change in the system and make the system work equitable across all communities. Again, every single one of these departments, no matter which one you look at, every single one reports under the mayor's office. And what we have is a bully pulpit to push them, to try to get them to do the right thing, which is what your Alderman does on a regular basis.
Senator Nashid.
Yes, for the first time in history, we have a police chief that lives north of Del Mar, a public safety director that lives north of Del Mar. For the first time, we have two African Americans representing the public safety department. And I believe that we have to give Chief Hayden's and Jimmy Edwards a chance. You're talking about a former judge and a PhD in criminal, in criminology. So those two individuals have a pilot program that they're pushing right now. And it's called the triangle method. And that triangle, triangle method is a method that brings in the FBI, the DEA, the ATF, and social service organizations. What I would like to do as president of the Board of Aldermen is provide more resources for that particular program so that we can see the reduction in crime. I have talked to police officers all over the city. And they said to me, Jamila, we don't have to look outside. Allow for Chief Hayden's and Jimmy Edwards to implement their plan and give them the funding that they need in order to reduce the type of violent crimes that we're seeing in the city of St. Louis. So I would like to see more police social workers inside the city of St. Louis. Because we have them all over the country and we need them here in St. Louis.
Thank you, Senator Nashid. This is an iHeart Media St. Louis special edition of iHeart Communities, sponsored by the St. Louis Chapter of the NAACP and STLTV, the City of St. Louis TV Channel. Benita? We're back and we'd like to allow each of our candidates an opportunity to provide us with closing remarks. And we've actually expanded that and will allow each candidate three minutes to wrap up, give us their final thoughts on the office and the race. And we will start with Mr. Matthews.
I have been speaking on issues such as racism, corruption, injustice, human and civil rights and economic justice, and educational opportunities, and integrity in leadership, and many other such things. I believe as your president of Board of Aldermen, that I will be the person with the vision for our city and I will be dedicated to doing the job 100%. And the reason why is that I'm not running to get a job. I'm running to do a great work in the city. I believe we can do that if we have leadership that reaches out to you to participate and be involved. We have a group called People Involved for a Better Community. The name itself, if you want it to be better, get involved. And what we're saying in this group, that we're going to talk to everybody on every block and everybody on every block that has a vacant building, they're going to invest in a building as a group and repair it and rent it out or whatever, or sell it. So what they do on the hill, if you go up on the hill, you see they're building a mansion next to a one-room or two-bedroom or whatever. If you look at other neighborhoods that's doing well, I was over in Central West End. They're building high rises and all that kind of stuff. Where is all that money going? That's our dollars that they're using. All our dollars are spent in Central West End and we get the crumbs. I'm the only one up here that lives west of Del Mar, I mean, north of Del Mar. I've been over there in the Waller Park neighborhood for God knows how long. I've seen it when it was all right and I see it while it's declining. And I decided not to move. I decided that I'm going to make where I stay a little do. I'm not going to move to Little Do. But we're going to make where we are a little do. But I can't do anything in my neighborhood because the political people are wanting to hand out, want me to give them some money. I'm not giving you a dime for nothing and you got elected and I voted for you. So we got people in office, they want you to hand them out some money. That's, I'm, that's, the reason I'm running, I'm just upset with the whole thing. All that corruption, all these lying and all that stuff. Man, don't lie to me. I decided to not ever be lied to. And the way I do that, I don't believe nothing anybody tells me. I watch your action and that speaks louder than your words.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Reed, your closing remarks.
I thought I was last. Because, because I was first.
I'm sorry. Mr. Matthews was first on this round?
Oh, I thought I was first in the opening.
Pardon me?
Thought I was first in the opening.
Are you able to give us your closing remarks?
Absolutely, I'm ready, 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 ready. So, so I tell you, I am, I'm thankful that all of you have shown up here today and I'm thankful, thankful to iHeart Radio for giving us the opportunity to talk about some very important issues. Our city is at a crossroads and it's going to take some tough decision and it's going to take some strong leadership to take us to the next level. Across my time in office, we've been able to address many issues. We've created the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we helped over 11,000 families in the city of St. Louis with rental assistance and mortgage assistance. We've helped to create more economic opportunity for people all across this city, created thousands of jobs and economic empowerment to communities that have long been left behind. It has taken us over 100 years to get in the shape that we're in. And it's going to take, it's going to take more than 12 and more than 15 and more than 20 years for us to turn this around. It's not going to happen overnight. But we're headed in the right direction. And we've created some groundwork that can help us get there. And I'm asking for people all across the city to join with me in this reelection campaign and join with me to continue to change what's happening in our city for the betterment.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Senator Nashid.
Thanks for having me and thanks all of those individuals that are listening today. We all want the same thing. We want better schools, safer neighborhoods. We want a place where individuals can walk down the street and feel like their children will be safe. Right now, we have the tails of two cities. When you go north of Del Mar, all you see is vacant and abandoned building, block after block. And I believe that that is a direct correlation of the lack of leadership. And we can do better, we must do better. I have, I've grown up in the city of St. Louis all my life. I love this city. I grew up in the Doris Webby Housing Projects with my grandmother and three siblings. My father escaped the Vietnam War and came back home and was shot by whoever drive by shooting. Mother committed suicide two years later after deep depression. So I know all too well about poverty. I know all too well about mental health illness. What I want to be able to do is bring the expertise that I have learned on a state level under the control of the Republican House, Senate, and governor's matching back to the city of St. Louis. What we need now, more than ever before, we need an effective leader, a bold leader, and a leader that's willing to buck the status quo. I have served under the turbulence times, under the majority Republicans, and I have expunged the criminal recorders for nonviolent offenders. I banned the box for those young men who seek in a second chance. And I have been able, for the first time in history, to give Harris Stowe State University a graduate program. So I know how to be effective, I know how to get things done. Now, more than ever before, we need a leader that is going to look at North St. Louis and rebuild it and stop ignoring the fact that we are being left behind north of Del Mar. And I would love to work alongside Alderwoman Green because I think she would do a fine job working along with me at the Board of Aldermen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Nashid. Alderwoman Green.
Thank you. The president of the Board of Aldermen is perhaps the most important position in city government because at any point in time, this position is acting both as an executive and as a legislator. Working along with the mayor and the comptroller and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, the president of the Board will be the swing vote on that airport privatization contract. The president of the Board also has a lot of say over our budget priorities. And our budget priorities are not correct right now. We are putting too much money into an arrest and incarcerate model of public safety and only 0.03% of our budget into health and human services. Until we rectify that, we will not see lower crime rates. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund, while it is a great program, it has been historically underfunded for years and years and years. I voted against the city budget multiple years because it was shorted $500,000 a year. That fund is still owed $2.5 million. And under my leadership, we will make sure that that fund gets that $2.5 million. At the same time, we need somebody who understands municipal policy and good public policy. When we're looking about development, the Board of Aldermen in a lot of ways is a real estate development board. The most board bills that we have come through the board have to do with TIFs and tax abatements and things related to development. We need a citywide plan for development that prioritizes development on the north side and requires community benefit agreements so that as we are redeveloping, we are making sure that the development meets the needs of communities without displacement. If folks need a grocery store, then if you're going to come and build in our neighborhood, then you, you know, best be coming with a grocery store. That is the type of leadership that we need. Folks that are going to empower communities to drive developments, decisions. Folks that are not afraid to look at a different model of public safety from another country that is, or another city that is actually working. And somebody who has the courage to practice what they preach. To date, we have had 1,500 donations to our campaign, 66% of them from people in the city of St. Louis, averaging $53 because I believe that there is too much influence of money in city politics. And we have to change that system by moving us to a publicly financed option, especially with impending ward reduction, so that grassroots candidates can run competitive campaigns and get elected so we can bring the Board of Aldermen back to a body that actually represents people in the city of St. Louis. You know, for many of us who are out there, you know, protesting after Mike Brown, that has to be our breakdown moment as a, as a city and as a region, which means that we have so much opportunity to have a breakthrough moment. If we have the leadership with the courage of their convictions to stand up to special interests and to do what's right at the end of the day, so we make very different decisions as a city than have been made for a very long time and put St. Louis on the map for the right reasons.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Alderwoman Green and all of the candidates who've been with us this evening. This has been a special edition of iHeart Communities' Primary Candidate for the President, St. Louis Board of Aldermen Forum. It's sponsored by the St. Louis City Chapter of the NAACP, serving this community for 110 years, raising the bar. Thank you to our candidates, Jimmy Matthews, Alderwoman Megan Alia Green, Senator Jamila Nashid, and incumbent Board President, Louis Reed. Please be sure to get out and vote on Tuesday, March 5. This is your moderator, Bonita Cornutt, saying thank you for listening and have a good night. We will continue the conversation.
Thank you.
And ask. You moving, alternating as I had from the beginning, starting again with Louis Reed and proceeding down the line. At this time, if there was something that you wanted, one of the candidates felt the need to respond to in terms of a statement made in our earlier discussion, you do have the opportunity here, but we will do that after asking a few general questions of you. Hopefully, these will generate different responses and new information from each of you. How will you support neighborhood growth and stability through partnerships with businesses and developers? And are there any projects pending underway in City Hall that the city may be involved in that are of particular interest to you? Mr. Reed.
And I'm going to apologize, you know, from the beginning because I will not be able to stay for the whole thing. We have, we have some obligations that I have to make. But I want to, just, just start out. When we look at, you know, the opportunity to partner with businesses, I worked with businesses to add more youth jobs to the city of St. Louis so that we had our youth all across the city of St. Louis working within neighborhoods and partnering with businesses and learning a lot of the work ethics that normally they would not have. So that has been a tremendous opportunity for kids all across the city. I also think it's important that we create stronger partnerships with our business community and also our school system because then our school, our, our students within the school system will have an opportunity to work within some of these professional businesses. And we've done that. And I think.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. We've come to the end of that, that minute. Let's ask Senator Nashid for her quick response.
Well, right now, I'm on the state level. And while serving on the state level, I serve on a budget that oversees approximately $28 billion. And I have been able to bring home resources for organizations that partner with the St. Louis Public Schools. From Mission St. Louis, I put approximately $200,000 in the budget for Mission St. Louis. St. Louis, I put approximately $200,000 in the budget for Mission St. Louis. Also, for Mocan, to be able to skill up young kids and get them the skills that they need to be able to go on the job sites and become productive citizens, approximately 40-something million, 300, I mean, 40, 400,000, and additional 300,000 for those individuals who are falling behind in the St. Louis Public Schools, and that's math and science tutoring. So I have been working extremely hard on the state level, and I'll do the same when I get back home. Because again, it's very difficult up there trying to maneuver under the control of the Republican House and Senate, and I have been able to do just that. And so, if I can do it on the state level, surely I can do it on the local.
Thank you, Senator Nashid. Alderwoman Green.
Thank you. One of the biggest issues we have right now with return, with regard to job creation is a skills gap. So we have a, we have a budding startup industry in our city right now. What we don't have is enough people who are trained to fill that workforce as that sector grows. One of the things that I think we need to do is be a better partner with organizations like Launch Code. Launch Code doesn't require that you have a college education in order to go through it and get trained. And right now, they could serve two to three times the number of people that they are serving. And when you go through that program and you walk into a tech job, half the time, you know, you're walking into a $50,000 a year more job. Those are the types of jobs that we should be supporting at the city level. In terms of development, we are experiencing $8 billion of in-progress or planned development right now in our city. That is unprecedented levels of development, which means we have to do it responsibly, by partnering with developers to ensure that these developments are meeting community needs.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Yes. I, I have seen people with degrees, college degrees, working at McDonald's. I have a problem with that. If you can go get a four-year education, I suggest you go into your own business. Start a business. Sell some stocks, some socks, like they're doing on the corner, or make some bow ties and sell them. Or connect with Africa manufacturers and, and get them to let you be a distributor of their manufactured goods. I worked at Arthur J. Kennedy Skill Center. We taught kids how to read blueprints and do math. And there was other areas. They learned automobile repair. Many of my, my high school graduate students at, at O'Farrell Technical High School got jobs immediately working at McDonald's at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We're going to move into another question here, and we've touched on it a little bit tonight. The St. Louis City Public Schools accreditation. What will you do, if elected, to make sure students with the St. Louis Public Schools are getting what they need to receive the education they deserve in this city? Senator Nashid?
For the last three years, again, I sit on a budget that oversees $28 billion. And for the last three years, we have fully funded the formula. However, we have a system that's not working for our children. Children are graduating from the kindergarten to the 12th grade, not knowing how to read on a 3rd grade level. Okay? What we need to do now is begin to bring more monies into the city of St. Louis Public Schools for the purpose of tutoring, and I have done just that. Again, I, I put millions of dollars in the budget for math and science tutoring. And we also need to be able to allow for those individual kids who don't want to go to college to get a skill that they need in order to be able to put food on the table. Because I'm a firm believer, if you don't educate them, you're gonna incarcerate them. There is no in-between. And we are accredited right now, but guess what? Majority of our kids are below proficiency. They cannot eat, the ACT test is at the average of 14, 15, and 16, and that's appalling.
Thank you, Senator Nashid. Alderwoman Green.
There are two ways in which the president of the Board of Aldermen impacts our city schools. One, the president of the board has an appointment on the state-appointed board. And I think that it's important that whoever the appointment is on behalf of the president of the board is somebody who is working to transition our schools back to local governance. Second way that the president of the board impacts the public schools is through a tax-incentive system. About 60% of property taxes go to fund public schools. And so every time we are issuing tax abatements for $700,000 houses or for luxury apartment buildings, this is money that our schools are missing out on. We need to be very strategic in how we allocate these incentives, so that they are used to really incentivize development in areas where it would not otherwise occur, and not being used in stable areas of our city that don't need these types of incentives and is robbing our schools of money.
Mr. Matthews?
What's the question, ma'am? What's the question?
The question is about St. Louis Public Schools. If you are elected president of the Board of Aldermen, what is it that you think you can do to ensure that children receive the quality education they, they deserve?
Okay. I taught in the public school system, retired from the public school system. One thing I was very disappointed about, the parents don't have the power in the public school system. I think it's by design. We had parent groups, and we can, they can fire the principal or anybody that's not providing the kind of services to our community. You need the power in the hands of the people, and the parents know what they want for their kids. We're teaching things that our kids are not interested in. Curriculum is not such that we need to teach them about our history, not starting at slavery, but go beyond that. That would build that kind of who we are, instead of what we used to be before we became who we are, or someone defining us. So I'm saying that we have to inspire our children to learn. I taught special ed, and I found out that one thing about my students, they was genius. And I had to love them in order to be able to work with them. If you don't love the student, they can fail you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And Mr. Reed?
You know, I've had an opportunity to work directly with my appointee to the SAB Board to bring our school system back to full accreditation. Do we still have challenges in our schools? Absolutely, we do. But we have some great school systems, some great public schools within the system that I think that we need to praise. These kids that are working in the classrooms, they have done a tremendous job of working to learn the subject matters that are before them, and to perform as best they can on those tests. And then, and I, for one, am very proud of them. What, the other things that we need to do with our school system, again, we have to create stronger partnerships with the corporate world. That can help us tremendously all across the system.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. At this time, we are going to move to a portion of this program where we will have the three candidates, and I believe Mr. Reed is prepared to move to another event. Is that correct? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
This is an iHeart Media St. Louis special edition of iHeart Communities, sponsored by and streamed by STL TV, the city of St. Louis TV channel.
We've talked a great deal about the Lambert Airport and the finances there. Is it safe to say that the city-county merger, or the possibility of that, could possibly impact the future of the airport? What are your thoughts on that? Alderwoman Green?
I think that we have to look at all of these issues as if they are connected, because I believe that they are. I, I do think that the push to privatize the airport is to try to absolve the city of some of its debt. And I am skeptical that monies generated from privatization of the airport would be used for anything other than to pay down airport debt and pay down the massive amount of debt that the city also has. And so I think one of the reasons that privatization is being pushed is to help pay down that debt. And if Better Together would actually release their financials publicly, like I have asked them to do, I, I would guess that we will probably see that how they think that these numbers are going to work is through a combination of revenue generated through privatizing the airport and other city assets.
Mr. Matthews?
I don't know if, what I'm hearing is that we're saying that we have debt at the airport. I don't believe that. We may have a management problem, and if I had a business that was the airport, I'd make it make money. But since these people running it don't know how to run an airport where you can have some profits and not debt. And so, we had to get someone that has kind of intelligence, business-minded, and be able to make an airport like Griggs did a success. Colonel Griggs ran the airport. It was very successful. So we need to make sure that we are hearing the right information. When somebody tell me we have debt, well, somebody might be stealing the money.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Senator?
Let me just make this practically clear. When I become president of the Board of Aldermen, we will not even move forward with the concept or even the dialogue about privatizing the airport until we get an agreement that it would go to the vote of the people in order to move forward. What we need to be able to begin to have the discussions about is why are so many people being left behind in the city of St. Louis under the current leadership? What we have to do is change the way we're doing business in this city. We cannot keep doing the same thing and expect different results. There is a lot of great things happening in St. Louis. You have IKEA, Cortex. You have the Central Corridor is growing. Tower Grove East. You have all these places that are growing, massive economic growth. You have subsidies that are being given out to big developers at the expense of our public schools by way of TIFs. We need a leader that's gonna be able to make it equitable across neighborhoods, and I'm that leader.
Thank you, Senator Nashid. As president of the Board of Aldermen, what will you do to promote the city of St. Louis as a great place to raise a family? We hear repeatedly about the crime rate, the deficits, the deficiencies in the, the school system, even with the accreditation restored. What do we do to ensure that people outside of the region, potentially residents of this area, how do we make them know this is safe? This is comfortable. You can raise your family here. Alderwoman Green?
I started last time, but I'm happy to start again.
Yes, please.
Okay. I, you know, I think if we're talking about how we rebrand St. Louis to get us away from the stigma, the way we do that is by actually addressing our issues. I think anything short of that, we're just putting lipstick on a pig. And that's my concern of, of what we've been doing recently at City Hall, is we put Band-Aid solutions in place to make it seem as though we're actually addressing things like our crime rate. We can do a great marketing campaign of families, you know, enjoying St. Louis, but that does, that will not take away from our homicide rate. We need to actually change our public safety model. Bring in something like Operation Peacemaker that has been proven to work, so that we, you know, in five, 10, 15 years, when people are looking at St. Louis and they are hearing our name, they actually hear us for addressing the issues that we once were known for.
Thank you, Alderwoman Green. Mr. Matthews?
Question is that, what?
The question is, how will you market the city, promote the city, as a place for people to live and raise a family, despite what we know regarding the numbers respective of crime and education?
Well, I'm in the real estate business. Everybody wants a family. They want to have good schools. You notice in our neighborhood, all the schools is boarded up, shabby and so forth. On the, I, I have a church, I pastor, on, on the River View. Across the street, it used to be Walno Park School, and it's not used for anything. The Board of Education won't give it to anybody that's gonna do something with it, and those types of facilities lower the property value. I was not far separate. I wanted separate without, separate with equal, equal, but separate. I want our neighborhoods to have schools, brand-new schools, and our children shouldn't be bust out in the county somewhere, and the tax dollars go follow the student, and our neighborhood is neglected. I can imagine how depressed it is for our children to ride out in the county, see all the nice houses, then ride back down in our neighborhood to see some bummed-out stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
We have some great amenities here in the St. Louis area. We have the Cardinals, we have the Blues, we have the soccer stadium that's looking to come to the city of St. Louis, and I welcome the soccer state, the soccer stadium. However, I want to be able to be that leader to say, yes, let's bring in more sports and entertainment, but let's have a community benefit agreement, where we can build low-income housing, and we can have early childhood, just as Nashville did. We have to deal with the systemic problems that's plaguing the city of St. Louis, and we have to be able to change the leadership. Again, we have to change the leadership. We have a 20% unemployment rate among black males. We have massive development, and you heard Alderwoman Green, to the tune of 8 billion, with little to no minority participation. That is appalling. We need leadership that's gonna demand that our people get a fair share and make it equitable across this city.
Thank you. Our next question, how will you get the nonprofit, non-property, tax-paying entities like universities and hospitals in the city to pay more money into the infrastructure of the city? Let's give each of you three minutes to respond. Let's see if you can come up with some creative response. We'll give you three minutes to give us your answer on this. Let's start with, with Mr. Matthews?
Yes. Years ago, I worked with university, Wash U and other universities. They was interested in providing some of their architectural people and students involved in the community. We could ask for those type of things from the university, that they would help us in our community writing proposals and other things to do that, and providing us with engineers and other people. In other words, when I was, when I was teaching, when I was at, when I was at O'Farrell Technical High School, I went out in the community and taught auto-mechanics, or how engines work. So I'm saying, resource, people that knows things that can be an asset to our community, and if we get those people involved in our community. I, I, North, South St. Louis, they got an investment group, and they meet so often. And I'm quite sure they're investing in the neighborhood. We don't have that in our community. What I want to do is establish an investment group, where you can develop your own neighborhood. You don't have to beg nobody for nothing. You do your own thing. Put your little two pennies together, and put some sweat equity in what you need to do in your community. And I have a strategy. If I want to get rich, do some things. Buy every house on my block that becomes vacant, and fix it, and rent it out or sell it. But I don't have time for that because I'm doing this. So I, so what I'm trying to say is that brother, brother, uh, brother man there, he could put that together. They have block units all over the community city. Let them start taking up some money, invest in their own block, and build some houses, fix some houses, and keep it up, like they do on the hill and other places. That's how we gonna invest in our own neighborhood. When you got some investment in something, you gonna care about it. If you don't have no investments, you're a renter and that type of thing. No, we gonna teach ownership. Own your own. God bless the child that owns his own. God bless the child.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Senator Nashid?
Yeah, that's a very good question. Right now, we have SLU, who's a major player in the city of St. Louis, paying little to no taxes. We getting no tax revenue in a manner in which we should from SLU, as well as BJC and Anheuser-Busch. And their argument is that, you know, we have employers, and they pay into the earnings tax. And so therefore, they shouldn't be able to have as much tax revenue being taken out of their bottom line. However, there's been like a 15-year, 20-year tax abatement on a lot of the development that's happening here in the city of St. Louis. What I would like to see is after that tax abatement sunshine, that we begin to change the way we do business when it comes to TIFs. We have TIFs that are given out to developers, and what they call as blighted areas, which Central West End is not blighted, okay? Chesterfield is not blighted. Tower Grove East is not blighted. But North St. Louis is blighted. So what we have to do is redefine TIFs as we know it. So what we have to do is redefine TIPS as we know it in terms of what the definition is of blight and begin to use TIPS not just for economic development, commercial development, but now we need to go in towards, go towards using TIPS for neighborhood development and housing development north of Del Mar. So I would like to see TIPS redefined and, uh, air, in a, in a way that it is a blighted area because those areas are not blighted, but North St. Louis surely is blighted. And we use, we need to use those tips for, uh, housing development now, more so than commercial development.
Thank you, Senator Nashid. Elder Woman Green?
There's a couple of ways that the Board of Aldermen could impact, uh, the, the fact that so many nonprofits, large nonprofits, particularly in our central corridor, are not paying taxes because their taxes are exempt since they're nonprofits. It's our hospitals, that's our, our universities that basically fall into those categories. One of the things we can do is negotiate a pilot. A pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes, and this is something that's common in a lot of other cities that have huge research institutions like we do in our hospitals and our universities where it says, okay, you're not required to pay taxes, but we still recognize that the people who go and use your services, um, are putting a strain on our roads, are putting a strain on our, our, uh, utilities, are putting a strain on our city. And so we need you to pay something. We need you to, uh, give some kind of payment back to the city, uh, in lieu of paying taxes. So that, that is one thing that we need to do. The second thing is, uh, we need to look at a payroll tax for a large, for large nonprofits in our cities. So ones that are employing over, you know, a thousand or 5,000 employees. Um, again, that's our hospitals, those are our universities, um, who really are operating as if they are for-profit businesses in a lot of ways. And if we're, uh, if we, we were to put a payroll tax, uh, just on large universities, large hospitals, um, we're looking at probably around $10 million a year in, in revenue that the city could be, uh, bringing in. This is something that I've done an extensive amount of research on in the past. The, what we have lacked is the political will to move on issues like this. Uh, we do need to be ensuring, though, that the largest institutions in our city are paying their fair share of taxes, um, because they are putting strains on our roads, they are, uh, using our city services. Um, the other thing I, I think we need to do is look to the state level for TIP reform. Um, I do agree with the, the Senator that we need to redefine, um, TIPS and tax abatements and redefine, redefine blight. Unfortunately, that's not something we can do at the local level. It is a state statute. Um, and so we need state changes and state intervention in order to change that system.
Uh, can I, can I respond?
Yes, Senator Nashid? Yes. Uh, so I, uh, sponsored that legislation approximately a month ago. So we will, uh, redefine and change the way, uh, blight is being used in the city of St. Louis, and it will be used more north of Del Mar after I'm done.
Thank you, Senator Nashid. Um, and this will be our last question, and you've probably each touched on it to some degree, uh, throughout the evening. But again, we want to ask if you have any new ideas or, um, initiatives that you believe should be introduced and implemented to improve neighborhoods, businesses, and communities? Senator Nashid?
Well, first and foremost, what I would like to do is, uh, see, uh, more African-American developers, uh, here in the city of St. Louis. And I would also like to fight for, uh, more economic growth north of Del Mar. Because again, we have some great restaurants on the south side and the central corridors, but when you go north of Del Mar, and that's, and that's the problem I'm having with leadership, is that North St. Louis have been left behind. When you have, you go north, you have McDonald's. You have all these great, uh, all of these bad restaurants that's bad for your health. But what I want to do is, I want to be that visionary individual that go out and talk to developers and get their ideals and their concepts as to how we can reshape North St. Louis and make it look like every other part of this city. Because only, so goes north, so goes South St. Louis, so goes South St. Louis, so goes the central corridors. I want to be able to bring more senior facilities to North St. Louis and South St. Louis because we have a shortage of housing when it comes to seniors. We have a shortage of housing when it comes to single mothers. Uh, and we, they are being priced out of the city. They cannot afford, uh, $1,800 a month rent because they're on fixed income and their income is not going up or down. We need someone that is going to fight for the voiceless, and I am that person. I have been that person, and I know I can do it better back home, under the control of 28 Democrats, soon to be 14.
Thank you, Senator Nashid. Elder Woman Green?
Right now, we have a completely developer-driven process in our city, and that's one of the reasons that we have such unequal development across our city. There's no plan, and we couldn't really have a plan even if we wanted one because we don't have a functional planning department. Uh, one of the things that needs to change is our budget priorities as it relates to urban planning. We need an actual funded planning department that can work with community development corporations and the neighborhood plans that are put together all across the city to build it up into one big development plan. Um, and once we get that city-wide development plan in place, then we start to say, hey, you can qualify for this amount of incentive in this area of the city. And it has to be prioritized so that areas like the north side, areas like Southeastern City, um, that still struggle with a lot of vacancy are the places that are qualifying for those incentives. Because right now, if you can get that 10-year tax abatement in the central corridor as a developer and you know that that is a stable area where you are going to make a lot of profit, it actually provides a disincentive to go and develop on the north side or develop in Southeastern City. And so by getting that plan in place for all projects, not just below $1 million, which is what the Board has been working on now, um, we can begin to incentivize development on the north side while also making sure that that development matches with neighborhood plans that have been created. Because it needs to be communities that are driving development, not developers. Um, and, and when developers come into communities, there has to be community benefit agreements attached, um, that mitigate displacement, that mitigate increasing costs, uh, and property taxes that sometimes come along with new development to ensure that the folks who live in those neighborhoods that is experiencing the development actually are the folks who benefit from it.
Thank you, Elder Woman Green. And Mr. Matthews?
I hate to differ with people. Um, we, we, they have a plan. Um, every renewal, you remember that? Team four? They've been planning, it's just that you don't know. That bridge they built, that new bridge, real estate people made a lot of money because they bought the land because they knew it was going to come over that way. You have those kind of inside people who are knowing the plan and buying up property because the plan is for that, that to happen. I would suggest that all of the vacant lots in our neighborhood, north of Del Mar, we would homestead those neighborhoods. We would occupy that land. We'll grow cotton, corn, and whatever else. And chickens until we're able to build some things from there. Start a organic farm on those vacant lots. I drive through the city and I see large vacant lots. I say, why are they doing that? Then you have to say, developers are not going to develop in your neighborhood, develop in one house. They want whole neighborhoods to develop anything, just like that NJ, what's that thing they building with the government? That McKee, he bought all the ground, and he made millions at our expense. So these plans are not where we can see them and take advantage of it. So I would fail, I, 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 I cannot believe that there is no plan. When you can see the evidence of all these vacant lots and big acreage of lots. Going to Third Ward, just off of Highway 70 and, and Grand, they got so many vacant lots that are together. In the Walnut Park neighborhood, where the park at, on Lillian, the city have bought up a whole bunch of land there, and the city owns it. Who you think they're going to give that project to? Now, another thing, I read in the papers where there, where they have Section 8, people who have Section 8, uh, uh, requirements, they can, but there's no housing just for those Section 8 people, not in South St. Louis and not in North St. Louis because we're not building that. So we ought to build some Section 8 houses in North St. Louis on those big old vacant lots, and we ought to do it ourselves. We don't need nobody from somewhere else taking the money out of the neighborhood and going somewhere else. You know all these stores in our neighborhood, the Arab stores and the filling station, everybody owns, everybody can get a loan in our neighborhood but us. That is ridiculous. That is insane. And then you notice that they burn up their little buildings. Look on Union by the bank. They burn up their little stores and they got a brand-new store built next to that. You burn up your store, you be in jail. Them Arabs, they burn up the stores and they build a new building after them.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We appreciate the support and input from all four candidates running for President of the Board of Aldermen. We say thank you to you, Mr. Jimmy Matthews, Elder Woman Megan Aleah Green, State Senator Jamila Nashid, and incumbent President, St. Louis Board of Aldermen Louis Reed. Please be sure to get out and vote on Tuesday, March 5th. Thank you and good night.
This is an iHeart Media St. Louis special edition of iHeart Communities, sponsored and streamed by STL TV, the City of St. Louis TV Channel.